That was an interesting process yesterday.
Yeah.
We don't spend enough time.
Favor that too.
Yeah, actually, we should. Well, good morning. We'll call the November eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen Commission Meeting to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Holloway. And as we reflect, I would suggest we recognize the men and women in uniform, their families, past, present, and future, and thank them for their service.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? I might suggest that we move executive session up to item, below item fifteen, before item sixteen, in case our time moves in such a way that we end up waiting for ten thirty. Is there any other changes?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda with the one amendment to it.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda with item twenty moved up. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I might mention that Commissioner Troutman is in peer today. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of November seventh, two thousand and fourteen; approval of the vouchers in the amount of four million, four hundred, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred, sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents; to acknowledge the annexation to the Redneck Road District as approved by its board on October twenty-fourth, or excuse me, October twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen, as submitted by the Auditor's Office; number eight is to approve the expenditure for county Christmas tree and decorations for the new administration building, as submitted by the Auditor's Office; number nine is approval of the U.S. Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement, number fifteen, E.M.S.D. zero-zero-one-four, as submitted by Emergency Management; number ten is approval of the South Dakota Game Fish and Park Services Contract Agreement for the Whitetail Roop Load in Two Hundred Thirty-Sixth Street, as submitted by the Highway Department; number eleven is approval of the Scenic Township two thousand and fifteen Maintenance and Snow Removal Agreement, as submitted by the Highway Department; and finally, number twelve is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the months of September and October two thousand and fourteen, as submitted by the Human Resource Office.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like number eight removed. We need to talk about it.
Number eight?
Mr. Chairman, Dan Richard, I'd like to remove number nine.
Okay, well, number eight, number nine have been asked for removal. Any further comments or discussion? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of eight and nine.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the removal of number eight and number nine. Any discussion on the motion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item eight.
Well, I think I'm in favor of it, but I think it probably needs some explanation.
Good morning, Commissioners. KJ Peterson, Pennington County Auditor's Office. I put this request together, did a little bit of emailing around to some of the departments in our new building, and just thought, you know, we all have our own little Christmas trees that we place somewhere in our office and have in the past, but that big beautiful archway just seems so deserving of a Christmas tree, more, really, quite frankly, to welcome the public into, into the building. So I did a little research, checked out, went out to menorahs on that cold snowy Veterans Day, and habbi-labi, and we could get a tree for, already lit, pre-lit tree, for four hundred dollars. That's a nine-foot tree, which is what we need to, to fit. My first guess was twelve. That archway's kind of deceiving, and I went to the mics and they said, no, no, that's too big. And Mike Peterson said he could absorb the cost of the tree in his two thousand and fourteen budget, about two hundred dollars more, so a total cost of about six hundred dollars could pretty up a, a pretty nice tree. We should be able to get several, I mean, a good artificial tree usually lasts five years, so it's something that we can use again in future years. So I just thought I'd put it together as a proposal that you might consider the approval of the purchase. Don't need any contingency money or spending authority. The Auditor's Office will absorb the less than two hundred dollars or less of ornaments, and got lots of volunteers in, in the building that said they'd be happy to help get it decorated and up, so that hopefully it's up before we leave next week on Thanksgiving, or up when we come back from Thanksgiving, and, and we'll get it down right after the first of the year.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion? Oh, excuse me.
Dan Richard, I, I agree. I think that the tree would be beautiful up there, but do we want to open that can? If a half a dozen Hindus come up and want to put the county to pay for a statue of Shiva in that, are you gonna do that? Or come up and want a menorah in there? Is the county gonna come up with the money for that? I think it's, I think, I think you could just be opening up a can of worms here by doing that, and, but like I said, I agree that, I think the tree would be beautiful there, but I think we need to take into consideration, there's, there's people out there that would try to take advantage of the situation, just cause trouble, nothing else.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Frankly, I'm a little tired of the political correctness, and I think we should make the decisions on each individual item as, as it comes up to this board. And I see absolutely nothing wrong with being a Christian, as well as most people don't seem, seem to think there's anything wrong with being a veteran. And I think it's an excellent deal that we honor our veterans, and I think it's an excellent deal that we honor Christ in our, in our daily lives. And I would make motion later if we have more discussion.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Show move. Mr. Chair, approve the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item nine. Can we come in?
Alexa White with Pennington County Emergency Management. And this is the annual agreement that we have with the U.S. Geological Society for the Met Warren System that is the gauge and stream flow gauges that measure the stream flow, so we know if a flood is, you know, coming our way. And this split between the USGS, they pay just a little bit less than half, and then the other agencies, jurisdictions, and the counties split the rest of that. Pennington County has a portion as a whole, and then different cities, Hill City, Rapid Valley, City of Rapid City, and a few others split the rest of that half.
Alexa, the county's portion is already in the budget. You budgeted for that.
Correct.
This is something you do every year?
Yes, we do this every year.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, Dan Richard, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to know where these gauging stations are, if, if anybody knows where they're at, on a stream.
Um, I don't think we have a map on our website, but I can provide you with a map. There's a map of all of these locations, that, of all the stream gauge flows. And there's also, on USGS site, you can go on there and, and pull up each of the sites. I don't know that there's a physical map to look at, but it, it names each site. You know, one on Victoria Creek, one on, you know, different places, one in Rapid Valley, all these different spots.
Do you know how many there are in total?
Um, off the top of my head, it's somewhere between fifteen and twenty.
Thank you.
I don't have the exact number.
I think it says on here there's eighteen gauging stations.
Thank you.
Base station and eighteen gauging stations.
There's twenty because they soak West Dakota for some money, too, or two of them. But the, the other question I have is, I don't quite understand, Rapid Valley Water Sanitary District, are, aren't, are they subordinate to the county?
I'm not sure that there's any relationship in this that causes, or would raise the question of who's subordinate to whom. Sanitary District is an entity unto itself, but if there's a gauging station there, is that?
There's a gauging station in Rapid Valley, and I believe they are part of this because if, if there was a flood in their area, that would affect the Rapid Valley area. It would cause their, their water system to be affected adversely, and so it's a benefit for them to know if the water is, is running high, that they need to change things that they're doing on their end, or, or do something different. They do pay one of the smallest portions of the total amount.
I'm, I just, I thought they were, that the, the sanitary district was subordinate to the county, so, and I may be wrong in that thinking.
It, I, I don't quite see how a, a relationship like that would affect the stream gauging in and of itself.
Well, if they're, if they're subordinate, they're double-dipping. They're getting money from you, the county, through this request here, and then they're getting money from Rapid Valley, who's subordinate to you.
Rapid, Rapid Valley gets theirs, their funds from their water fees and their sanitation fees.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
They do. That's where they get their funds from.
Okay.
We, we don't provide Rapid Valley Water and Sanitation any funds.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion for approval of the joint venture.
There's a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve item number nine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item thirteen. Items in building, building grounds.
Good morning.
Morning, Mike.
Mike Cool, Buildings and Grounds. Uh, I am here seeking Commission authorization of change order number six for the campus expansion project, which would be the administration building, evidence building, and the site work on Block ninety-nine. This change order would be for, for a contract sum increase of forty thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and twenty-two cents, without any time implications of that, so there would not be no date change. That, this work has been completed along, and this is, this is part of the process of working through closing out the project. This will be the last change order for the project. I'd like to point out that this was a twenty-two and a half million dollar project, and with this change order, the total change orders on the project is two hundred and sixty-one thousand and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. That's just slightly more than one percent of the overall project value, so that's, it is a pretty significant feat, that I think is, gives, and credit should be given to the design team for the work that they done on the plans and that required so few changes, our good working relationship with the general contractor and the subcontractors, and the oversight that many in Pennington County provided on the project. With that, I seek your approval.
Is there a possibility that you had something to do with this also?
I, I certainly would like to take some cred, the credit for it, but it, it is a, a, a team effort that certainly that the Building Committee deserves a lot of credit as well for the oversight they provided.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may. You know, I do think both mics deserve some credit for being able to hold that change order number down to a one percent, or slightly more than one percent. And frankly, I, I, you know, I wish there was some media here, because, you know, if this would have been a ten percent overrun, it'd been plastered all over the front page of the Rapid City Journal, and they'd probably run a story for the next several weeks about it. But one percent on a project of this size, and as complicated as this was, of a project, is, frankly, it's outstanding. I mean, we've worked some other projects in Pennington County, and I always thought we did pretty good, holding change orders down on those, but I don't think we ever got this low, especially with this big of a project. So, you know, I just think it's a great feat, and hopefully, somebody will listen to this tape when they're bored at home and don't have anything else to do. And we'll see how good of a job that you guys did with this.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the change order as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to add to what Don was saying, and thank the people that were on that construction board, and the judges here. I know he spent a lot of time doing it. Don and Nancy spent a tremendous amount of their own personal time working on this building committee, and I think they've all done a fantastic job of putting this together. And as Don said, the Rapid City Journal and the news people have taken it upon themselves. I guess they're not interested.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item B, window coverings.
Our desire had been to purchase window coverings for the new building through a state contract, and we, after we've done some work, we'd real, recognized that there isn't a state contract available that we could purchase those window coverings through. So I've gone, I've sought some proposals from three different vendors, and have received some proposals. The, the lowest one, based on the, the request that I'd sent out, is for thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars, for a combination of power blinds and manual blinds throughout most of the facility, with some limited exceptions. The power blinds are mainly just on the south windows, along the public corridor areas. The rest of the blinds would be in offices primarily, but meeting rooms as well. On Friday, I, I did receive some additional information about a different material that's available that might suit this project better, that has a lighter colored fabric exposed on the outside versus a, a darker one on the inside. And I've requested additional pricing from these vendors for that material, which I have not received as of yet. So I'm asking the Commission for some, a little latitude, and this can be approved through the Building Committee. We have a, a, the bottom end number right now. I'd like to have the ability to, to step up to this other material, which may help us control heat within the, the building a little bit better, with Building Committee approval. That, I would say that the amount with it, we're working within, is probably, you know, the upper end, we could say, forty-five thousand. I think that's more than this will end up being, but this will be a price that is submitted with multiple vendors, so we should have the, the lowest price we can get.
And Mike, there's not a requirement to bid this, these items?
No, correct. It's under fifty thousand dollars, so we, we need to bid it.
The other mic went like this.
Okay, I would make a motion to authorize Mike Cool expenditure authority up to forty-five thousand dollars to deal with the blinds throughout the building.
There's a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Anyone? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Both mics. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is from the Compensation Committee.
Good morning. Nick Stroud, HR Director and Chairman of the Compensation Committee. The first item that we have is simply titled a proposed wage study, and in your packet you found a memo that I wrote. We had, the, the genesis of this is we had the Sheriff's Office come to the Compensation Committee with seventeen changes to the job classification. The reason that we, it was done that way is it was heard from the department head group last year during budgeting process, that these type of requests would be handled individually. And so the sheriff and his staff took it upon themselves to put together the proposal that you have in your packet, and that was presented to the Compensation Committee. At that meeting, we had a very animated discussion. Commissioner Buschried was in the room with us, and there wasn't a, there was a lot of passionate discussion, and I think it was a good discussion for our committee. This was also brought up at the department head meeting, where again, I think there was probably twenty, twenty-two people in the room representing our departments. And again, this was discussed on how we want to look at our wage scale. And the consensus when we left that room was that we would bring it to the Board of Commissioners, the idea of a wage study, rather than the, what we took to calling piecemealing these requests in front of the Commission, rather than each individual department doing their own research, coming through the Compensation Committee, and individually coming in front of this board. The idea might, was that it would be more efficient to take a step back, do a full wage study, and then everyone can be done at the same time. There was discussion on how we would pay for it, who would do it. We know that Condrey and Associates has done the wage study for Pennington County back in two thousand, two thousand and one. They just did the cities a couple of years ago, so they're very familiar with the area. There are other companies. When I first started, we did a wage study just for elected officials, and we, there was a company out of California, and one out of Minneapolis, and then Condrey, who we ultimately went with and completed that study for us. So there are some national firms. There's really nobody locally that we could go with. So if, what our idea was is be, we just had some preliminary talks with Steve Condrey just about what a wage study would look like, and he says it would take about five months to complete. And we thought that it would be a good idea to get going on this as soon as possible, because we know that this is going to have to be discussed during budget time. And with us starting the budget in the spring, working it through late spring and early summer, and then having the preliminary budget approved in July, we would hope that we could get a wage study completed, and at least have the information available to us as we start that budgeting process. And so that is how we arrived at this point. So I know there's a number of department heads here with their own opinions, so I guess I would stand for questions.
Any questions for, for Nick? Looking at the agenda, item B, proposed job position grade changes from the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Tone, do you feel it's appropriate at this time that you review your request? I, I'm not sure that the board has got their minds wrapped around this whole thing yet, but...
Yeah. Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff, and, and again, I'll speak for our office. We do support doing a wage study, and again, like Nick said, what we heard was, you know, bring them piecemeal, is a term we coined, and which we did. And our HR Division, Stephanie, did a lot of research for comparables, brought that data forward, and frankly, created a lot of discussion. And again, Commissioner Buschried was there and heard the discussion, and I support doing a wage study, because piecemeal's going to create consternation moving forward, and it creates inequities in the scale. Let's fix it all at once, instead of doing it, you know, piecemeal. And as to item B, you know, I left it on there, one, to see what happens with the wage study, so we could talk about it. If you decide not to do a wage study, then that's my only avenue to make grade changes, is to bring that forward. But even absent that, the Compensation Committee recommended moving it forward, or moved it forward without a recommendation, with two exceptions, which I would ask you to vote on, on item B, and there's two grade, two new titles with grades that we need for positions within our office, and the Compensation Committee voted to move those two items forward. So on item B, I would ask you to vote on those two items, at a minimum, yeah.
Thank you.
And we, you know, we did get a, a preliminary cost for a wage study, and the preliminary cost that we heard was seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars for this wage study. And that was just quoted by one source, or one outfit that would do this for us, that was Condrey and Associates. So that would be...
Was you, was you able to share what the Sheriff's Office has already did? Maybe that'll lower their price. It sounded like they did half their work already.
And we didn't get into those discussions. No, we didn't.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I did forward that information on, and hopefully they would take that into consideration, the research that's been done already, and I don't know what cities they would use for comparables, but hopefully they could use some of that information. And, and I just want to reiterate one thing to the Knicks, that I think timing is important. You know, they said five months, you know, from start to finish, and we started today, you know, we're going to be well into our, our budget cycle. I know we have till the end of September to approve our... I know we have till the end of September to approve our provisional budget, but in our case, we have a very large budget, and to try and wait till September to see where wages may or may not fall, and see what we're going to do with operations, everything, just really puts us behind the curve when it comes to doing our budget next year. So I would like to see us move forward. Another thing I want to point out is, in the proposed changes we did, we lowered it a bunch of positions too. We didn't just increase some, we lowered some. It actually resulted in a net savings in year two to the county of twenty-four thousand dollars. So I think as we go through this wage study, I don't think we have to just look at increases, we can look at decreases in positions as well. I think everything should be on the table for discussion. And I do support using Steve Condry, and he's familiar with our area and our region, and has done Rapid Cities a couple of times. He's doing Bismarck's currently, and some think he's too high, some think he's too low, so that means he's probably about right. Thank you.
Kevin, do you know if, do you know if Condry's ever lowered a wage?
I don't know the answer to that.
Any other studies?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Be an interesting question to ask him before we contracted with him.
Be an interesting question for whoever we pick, frankly.
Yeah.
And again, that's, if the research warrants it, based on our individual research, we decrease, we're proposing decreasing the number of grades.
Thank you.
The discussion about funding for this that came out of the compensation committee, and then ultimately out of the department head meeting with Commissioner Trautman, who's not here, but she was at that meeting, was we know that this board likes us to bring forward proposals, not just come and say, here's a problem, can you fix it for us? But the idea that we had out of the department head meeting was that if the commission were to pay for half, then the departments would pick up the other half, and we would pay for it on a per employee basis. And so that was just an idea through general discussion that we reached to bring forward just as one proposal for payment of a possible wage study.
Mr. Busker, do you have any wisdom for us?
Well, I mean, you, you know, you can bring forward figures, and it'll prove just about anything you want to prove. And what I would like to see from my figures before I would ever vote on this is, the last few jobs we've had in the paper advertised, how many applications do we get for that? And how many people have quit in the last few years in giving us the reason that they're not making enough money? And I don't know if those figures are available or not, I'm sure the applications are.
Yeah, absolutely.
As far as I've been able to determine, we never have a shortage of people applying for jobs, so maybe the wages aren't that bad. Are they the top in the state? Probably not. You know, not probably not, they're not. We know that. Can we pay what Rapid City does? Absolutely not. So, and I'm afraid if we get Condry, that's what we're going to end up with.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I know there's other department heads that want to comment, so I'll try and be brief, but part of the reason we brought this forward is we have compression in our scale, on the upper end in particular. So it isn't just addressing entry level positions, it's about fixing people that are currently in positions and having compression. When you take a promotion from, you know, a senior deputy to a sergeant, and you get a twenty cent increase, it doesn't provide much incentive for good people to promote up through the ranks. And we, we have a compression problem in our, you know, management side, so to speak, of our scale, and that's part of the reason we brought this forward to help address that, not just the entry level positions.
And I think one other one, Kevin, if I might just remind you of, is when somebody goes from a sergeant who gets overtime to a lieutenant who doesn't get overtime, they actually take a cut in pay because of the suppression. Isn't that true? I mean, it used to be, and I...
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, you lose the overtime and some of those other benefits. And another example, and I don't want to belabor it, but our jail commander position, you know, and Sheriff Holloway, or when Commissioner Holloway, Holloway was sheriff, he experienced this. On a national scale, we can't get anybody to apply because our pay scale is so low. So we need to fix some parts of the scale in terms of compression and entry level at a commander level, and so it's fixing both ends of it.
Thank you. I think I saw Tom moving around back there.
While Tom's coming up, I'll just say that, you know, when we did the wage scale that we got now, we knew that we had that top end compressed tight, and had always kind of talked about looking at that at a later date, and that later date just never did come to fruition.
Tom, Willsey County Highway Department. I was wanting to answer to Commissioner Busker's question about applications and keeping people around. Our last time that we interviewed for people, we had two openings, we got two applications. We offered to both of them, one of them turned us down for more money elsewhere. This, we are seeing a tendency towards minimal applications coming in at the highway department. I personally blame North Dakota for this because we're losing a lot of...
We'll never pay what they're paying, so...
Yeah, but this is what, fact of life with me, is dealing with trying to get good people and having very few to choose from.
Thank you.
Wage study, I feel, would help us.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Leanne Hollenshed, Communications Director. I support this wage study. I think it's, it's been almost fifteen years since our last one. The economy has changed, our employees have changed dramatically. We also suffer in communications from compression, not so much with lack of applicants, but lack of quality applicants is one of the big things. But I think the wage study will really help this, and I support doing it sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Barry Tice with Pennington County Health and Human Services. I'm fortunate enough to be a newer member on the compensation committee, and as the sheriff has noted, and Nick has noted, each month, there's, positions are brought to the compensation committee for review, and when we talk about piecemealing, it's just showing a trend. And I think this comprehensive assessment of wages, it comes at a good time when we're talking about a fifteen-year period in which the last wage study was done, and I know I would find a way to provide the financial support to conduct this wage study if so choose. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The other thing is that, you know, we saw yesterday in the evaluations, that the piecemealing that we're doing now is not the right way to do it, and is not working. Because if we grant all these today, I guarantee we'll have more next, we'll have every department before the end of the year wanting more, more money and more wages. So the piecemealing that we're doing is not the right way to do it. I can't say, the problem with a general overall wage study is, and we went through that, I think, the last time, yeah, we'll get Condry in here, and everybody should get more money, and we won't have the money to fund it. And so we've told our employees, here's what, here's what you should be making, but now we don't have the money to pay you. And so, you know, we threw seventy-two thousand dollars away, basically. I think the last time we implemented some of it and didn't implement some, and we ended up with step sixteen A and step sixteen B, and it was a nightmare for the auditor and everybody else. So, you know, that's the other thing we got to think about, is are we, are we prepared to implement the thing, at least a good share of it? Because it's not fair to the employees to do it and not implement it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would agree with Commissioner Busker. You know, that, I mean, that if we're going to do the wage study, we really do need to spend some time as a board thinking about how, how we would fund that wage study. Now, there's ways to fund it. You know, is there, is there some programs that we need to, to look at saying, okay, should we take care of our employees and do a good job with the things that we're required by statute to do, and get rid of maybe some things that we are optional for us? And those are hard decisions to make, I know, very hard decisions to make. The other thing that a person can do in trying to figure out how to take care of the employees appropriately, is, is there other forms, other ways that we could raise money or reallocate some money from one department to another? I don't want to pick on the highway department because we got a new highway superintendent, but, but frankly, there's a lot of counties fund their highway departments through the license plates and gas tax. They don't use property tax funds for them. And, but we've got money that we're giving to the highway department through property tax. Again, we might want to look at that and say, we need to reallocate some of those funds. And I know that I read in a paper where the state legislature is, one of their proposals that somebody's putting together, I think it was some legislator from Mitchell, in trying to fix all the roads and bridges, is to force the twenty counties that don't have a wheel tax into getting a wheel tax. And frankly, if that happens, that'll bring additional money in Pennington County, and so we could reallocate some of those property tax funds we got. But that's the bigger question of this whole wage study, is if we're going to do it, the probably the first discussion that needs to happen is, what, what are we going to do to fund it? Because we do know it's going to cost some more money. Maybe there'll be some reduction in some positions that would lower that cost over a period of time, but it's going to cost more money if we do this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I agree with Commissioner Busker and Commissioner Holloway about the implementation of a new wage study. I, I have a real problem with going out for bids, and I, I'm not a big fan of Condry and Company. But my suggestion would be, and I see where it lands, but that we go ahead with taking proposals from some organizations to make a wage study, and then act on it the first week in January with a new commission onboard, because they're the ones that's going to have to live with whatever decision is made. And I don't think it's right, for me as an outgoing commissioner, to vote in a wage study or new wage policies or new wages for certain employees, and then that's something that the county has to live with from then on. I think the new commission ought to take care of that, and some of them ran on that, that by golly, we're going to stop spending. So let them give it a whirl and see where it lands. But I do believe that we should start that wage study implementation now and get proposals forth.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to disagree with Commissioner Davis slightly, I, I think we ought to deal with it this year. I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to the incoming commissioners to put that on them, because frankly, if I was an incoming commissioner, had little understanding of county government, and, and come in and was asked to do this, I'd say, give me six months or a year so that I can get my feet on the ground to understand all of this before you ask me to move forward with something as big as this wage study is, because it is a big, it's a big decision. So I, I think we ought to try to make that decision while we got people on the board who have some longevity and understanding of county government and our employees.
Mr. Chair, the only reason I disagree with Commissioner Holloway on that is that we have one, at least one new commissioner coming onboard that thinks he knows everything about everything.
Well, there's a lot of us that might have felt that way when we started.
But I, I've been wrong a time or two. I can't remember when it was the last time, no.
Mr. Chairman?
But I, I think that they should, they should be the ones that would hire the new company to do a wage study, but I think we should start it now.
Mr. Busker?
I'm pretty, I mean, this is a big decision for us, and it's, it, I mean, the seventy-two thousand or whatever it costs us, yeah, that's a lot of money, but the possible consequences of that are a lot more than that. And I think we need all five commissioners here before we do any voting on it, so, I mean, it's a good discussion to have, but I sure wouldn't want to do much until Nancy gets back.
In that regard, would it encumber your process? Well, wait a minute, KJ, you, you had something you wanted to say.
I, I did. Julie Pearson is also in here today and, and did put together some comments, and just at the last few comments, I thought was the opportune time to share that she too, of course, feels that the best option is to do a wage study, and looking at it timeliness so that the process could be completed in time for people to work on two thousand and sixteen budget in the spring and summer of, of two thousand and fifteen. She did feel strongly that we shouldn't just automatically assume to go with Condry and Associates, that they have not, in her opinion, always given us the, the best performance in the small study they did on the elected officials. The comparisons were well beyond appropriate, and the board did not accept their recommendations. And she, at the end of her comments, requests that the board direct Nick Stroud to head this project up with RFPs to perform a wage study and return it for approval by May two thousand and fifteen. So I just wanted to share those comments from Julie.
If I can make one comment, and I've worked with Steve Condry in the past, and I know we've had some comments, but when you do a wage study, you get put in that position that not everybody's going to make you happy. So I just, I think he's a professional, I think he does good work. I'm fine with doing an RFP, but whoever's going to be selected, I'll tell you right now, that not everybody in this county is going to like their results. Because if they do a good job, and if some wages need to be lowered, and we do that, then all of a sudden, whoever did the study is going to be the bad guy. So I just want to, if people can, are entitled to their personal opinion, but at the same time, whatever firm we hire, if we do hire a firm, not everybody's going to like their results if they do a good job. So hearing what Commissioner Davis had said, and kind of piggybacking on what Commissioner Busker had said, would it be appropriate then to ask the board to give me permission to do an RFP and bring that RFP back at the first meeting in December when Nancy's scheduled back? So at least we would have, hopefully, more than one firm with differing prices based on what we're asking, so...
Okay, Russ?
Ruston's old IT director for Pennington County. I just want to throw my support in for doing a wage study, and I also wanted to let you know that my department is prepared to help with the cost. We can fit that into our budget to do our part for the, for the wage study. But I also wanted to, to offer that the last couple of jobs that we've hired for, on the lower end, less experienced jobs, we did get a lot of applicants. We probably got fifty or sixty applicants of those. We probably had three or four that were qualified applicants, and we found a good person. But we also have a lot of different kinds of jobs in the IT department. Last time, we advertised for a software developer. I think we had three applicants, none of them qualified at all, and then we reposted the job, and we reposted the job, and finally, we did get one applicant that was a very good applicant, and we hired him. So it really depends on the job. We do have a tough time with some of our jobs that require a lot of expertise in this area. But for other jobs, it's very easy. So a wage scale study would help me to understand where we need to be in the full range, because I don't fully understand what we should be offering for some of our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else listening to this? Nick, you're, you're the point man. And we've had quite a few ideas talked about. Would it be a problem for you if we said we will hold this for the next meeting and ask you to not only, if, if getting RFPs is a problem, is that a problem?
I don't believe so, no.
Then if you were to get RFPs and at the same time, get commitments from each department as to what they would contribute toward the cost, and present some kind of a package to us at our next meeting?
If directed by the board, I'd be happy to do that.
Is there any...
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if, because one of the things, one of the things that we really need to decide is how we're going to fund this thing. So would it be fair to throw that back to the department heads and say, along with coming in with these RFPs and stuff, come in with some ideas on how you think the county could fund this, whatever it might be, but, you know, so I understand it would be general discussion, but that's the kind of discussion this board needs to make a decision with before we can say, let's do the wage study.
When you, when you talk about funding, you're talking about funding the impact on the wages?
Right. How, how, not the, not the wage study, but the funding of, the implementation of it, because that's the bigger question.
And, and yeah, and I can do, that could be a two-part thing. Would you be willing to contribute to the, we'll just say seventy-two thousand... Would you be willing to contribute to the, we'll just say 72,000 for the wage study, and then we need ideas for implementing this proposed wage study if we get it back?
Right.
Are you comfortable with that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I am. I don't have a problem with that, because I don't think we can, we can go out there in today's market and say, taxpayers, guess what, you're going to pay more money against our employees can make more. I think we've got to work on, within the limits that we have, somehow cut programs, do something different to pay for it. And if we can find a way to do that, I'm all in favor of it. I don't have a problem with it.
Well, you know, and I think our department heads have probably as good a handle on what's out there, because they're the ones running those programs and overseeing them, and so they've probably got as good a handle as anyone in coming back with some recommendations on what we could do.
I agree.
So any other thoughts, Nick?
No, I will work on what was asked, and we'll be back at the next county commission meeting, December 2nd.
I'll be busy in the next couple of weeks.
Do you need a motion to?
I would feel better with a motion directing me to go out for, I guess the motion I would ask would be to go out for an RFP for a wage study for Pennington County and to solicit help from the other department heads in funding.
Mr. Chair, I'd make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, and I made a statement earlier about Condrey and Associates, and I have a little problem with them, but that's what this country's made out of, is the majority rules. So, and basically the lowest one in the contract that bids rules. So if they come up best and do the best job, fine, I don't care. I don't have a problem. But I want to see what the others have to say about it.
Absolutely.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And Sheriff, what two did you need?
And I could take, yeah, either that. It's a control, based on recommendation from the Compensation Committee, we would like to add the control room operator at a grade eight and a crime analyst at a grade 14. The crime analyst is paid for by a grant, so it wouldn't be any painting from county money. And the control room operator is currently a grade 11, but we would like to move that to a grade eight, because they do not do the same duties as a booking tech, and this is where I'll let you take over.
Yeah, correct. I mean, and the JL, the booking tech, also splits the duties as control room operator at JSC, the Juvenile Services Center, they're just control room operators and don't do the same job as the JL, so we want to separate the two. So at the JSC, they'll be a control room operator, but it could be a lower grade, because they don't have the same responsibility as a booking tech. And the Compensation Committee did vote to recommend an approval on those.
So the motion we would be looking for is to approve the control room operator at a grade eight and a crime analyst at a grade 14.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't know how they came up with this decision, like on the control room operator, but I presume that's the person that runs all of the TV cameras and the TV sets and the doors and things in and out of the jail, and that's what we're talking about?
That's correct.
And so we need somebody there with, I think, a very reputable reputation and a reputable person, and some person with some intelligence to make sure that people don't get in and out of that jail that aren't supposed to. So would that taken into consideration when this?
And again, it'd be just the Juvenile Services Center, not the jail, but same function, just on a much smaller scale. I mean, you got 30 inmates at the Juvenile Service Center as opposed to 500 at the jail. It's, it is two different functions.
And I'll apologize, Ken, I probably didn't make that clear. This would just be at the JSC, and I apologize about that.
We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To thank everyone who participated in this discussion. Next item is item 15, Highway Department, South Interstate 90 Service Road Speed Limit.
This section of road is administered by Pennington County. When we were looking at it, we found out there is no posted speed limit along this road. What we are proposing is setting the speed limit at 40, because there's one motel and three other businesses in there, and another motel going in along this road. We did a traffic study, 40 mile per hour seems to make sense for this road. So what I'm requesting is-
That's my motion, and to add the chair's signature.
Ask for the chair's signature.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Just a couple of questions. Do you know what the speed limit is on that road on the west side of North Elkvale Drive?
West side of North Elkvale.
Where it extends on towards Rapid City?
Oh, no, I do not. All right, up top ahead. I think it's the 40, 45 range.
And do you know what the speed limit is on the service road on the other side of the interstate, on the north side of the interstate?
No, I do not. We just did our study on this one, and I do not know what those two are.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Tom.
We take five minutes, and then go into a Board of Executive Session.
Motion to go into the Executive Session, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn Executive Session. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, we're almost at 10:30, and planning and zoning is next. Do we have a motion?
We'll have to have Ron here.
Pass the motion to convene Board of Adjustment, or simply to pass something?
Both.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second to convene is the Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Good morning, PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. Before you today, Commissioners, is variance 1427. Applicants are Doug and Mary Spurlick. The size of the lot is .64 acres, and existing land used as residential. The purpose of this variance request is to correct two setbacks and fractions previously undiscovered from a 2005 site plan from the original owner of the property who built the single-family residence. Just some history on the property. In March of 2005, RJ and Jane Inskeep received approval for an approach permit off of Highway 385 from the State Department of Transportation. In April of 2005, a building permit for the existing residence was applied for and approved. That building permit number is 05199. At that time, once the cameras are up and running here, this was the site plan that was used for the existing residence. As you can see to the north and the south of the property, it shows that the house would meet the 25-foot required setback in a general ag district considerably. In 2005, in May in 2005, conditional use permit 0613 was applied for by RJ Inskeep to allow the single-family residence to be used as a seasonal vacation home. Since that time, the new owners, Doug and Mary Spurlick, have purchased the property and now have possession of that CUP, and there are seven conditions to maintain the vacation home rental on the property, and it is only on complaint basis, and that was last reviewed in 2008. So now that the history is done, so what the applicant was doing is looking to add on a living room addition to his house. At the time he did that, he also had a new improved site plan done on the property and realized, if you can see the darker bold line, this is the original site plan that shows the house meets the setbacks. This is a current site plan that shows the lot is actually considerably narrower than previously he thought. And so the applicant is coming in to request to fix the northern setback infraction and also asking to allow for a 10-foot setback for the south side for the proposed addition of the living room, in addition to a 10-foot setback for a future proposed detached garage. Now, normally when we do setback requests, it's kind of a point-to-point, a corner of a building to a lot line. This one's a little different, and what I'd like to point your attention to is, in your packet where it has the 1, 2, 3, these are the three distinct areas that are being shown where the setbacks are being requested. And if I can get this pen to work, if you can see here, instead of a point-to-point setback request, he's asking for this entire section setback, this for the proposed garage setback, and if I can follow it through all the text, this for the proposed living room addition. A few reasons to allow for future expansion of the house without having to come back with the burden of reapplying for setback variance, but also, and to use the applicant's word, the site, the survey may not be accurate, and there may be a foot or so difference. So if in the future the property was surveyed again, this could keep him having to come back and have the lot resurveyed. The request was routed through the Interdepartmental Review. One item of note, if you look to the north of the property, it's where it says Mickelson Trail right-of-way. The property is located very close to the Mickelson Trail. We did contact the South Dakota Game and Fish Department, the Trails Division, and they do not disapprove of this, but they decided that they wanted to put no comment. There are four standards and variances that the Commission needs to consider in approval of variances. The first one, the specific circumstances or condition, exceptional narrowness, topography on the site to warrant this variance request. In the staff report, I did indicate that no specific conditions existed. I was thinking more of the garage that could have been relocated on the property. However, talking with the applicant, I am in concurrence with him that because of the extreme narrowness of the property, plus the floodplain that's on the property, where the house is, is probably the best place it could have been put, because most of the property with a 25-foot setback would be very difficult to build in. Due to the specific circumstances of the existing conditions, strict application of zoning ordinance would put an undue hardship on the applicant, as he would be required to remove portions of his existing residence and existing porches. Again, it's the 25-foot setback from all property lines, which is considerable in this, on this property. If you were to look at the next picture, hopefully, no, I didn't have it in here. This is a view of the property. This is a view of the house to the, and on the back corner here, the very last thing I'd like to mention, is when I looked at these pictures this morning when I got them, one thing that we didn't notice was also a detached shed on the property, which was not indicated in any of the site plans, and it was not discussed previously in the staff report. However, when we get to the conditions, I did want to add a sixth condition. Granting the proposed variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest at this time, and again, the applicant is coming in and is trying to correct infractions that he took on when he purchased the property, and then also requesting the setbacks for the detached garage, proposed detached garage, and the proposed living room with additional areas, so in case the site plan is not 100% accurate, he wouldn't have to come back in again at a future date, or put a future landowner, if there would be such a thing, in a bad situation like he was put in. If variance 1427 is approved by the Board of Adjustment, staff recommends it be approved with six conditions. At this time, I'd like to change condition four. I'd like to change 120 days to 240 days, and that is with the applicant's concurrence. Condition number five, I'd like to change 120 days to 240 days, and that is with the applicant's concurrence. And adding number six is for the detached garage that we discovered on site. And item six, condition six would read, within 240 days of approval of variance 1427, a separate setback variance be applied for and approved for the existing detached shed, or it be moved to a location on the property where it will meet the required setbacks, and a floodplain development permit be obtained if it is to be placed within the floodplain or the floodway, or it be removed from the property. And that last statement is because the proposed garage would most likely, according to the applicant, take place of the shed, and the shed, which is 12 by 12, and on a nonpermitted foundation, does not require a permit, just does not meet the setbacks at this time. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Who owns the land adjacent to this?
Which?
Well, to the back, I suppose, between that, this property and the wooden fence, is that Forest Service ground?
Forest Service, Forest Service.
And on the other side, lot H1?
Highway.
Highway Department owns all of that?
And Highway had no comment on this, or none. They did not have any comment. They did comment.
Does applicant have plans for the detached shed?
If the setback is approved for the detached, proposed detached garage, and he is able to build that, and we had talked this morning, he may remove the shed completely.
Is that what the plan is?
It will be if I can't comply with the ordinance. It's like I say, the set-in on skids on a gravel pad, you pick it up with a fork.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the variance with the phi, or with the six recommendations as provided by staff.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Any comments from anyone? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Make a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Do we have a second? Motion in the second to adjourn as the Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the Planning and Zoning Consent Agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda items for planning and zoning contain the following. Item B, Minor Platt 1430 and Subdivision Regulation variance 1415 for Dallas and Mary Dietrich. Approval is recommended with waivers. Item C, Minor Platt 1429 and Subdivision Regulation variance 1414 for Pat and Stacy Brown, Davis Engineering as the agent, and approval is recommended with waivers.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda on the Planning Department as presented by staff.
Do we have a second? Second, we have a motion and a second. In the way of discussion, I guess we missed the chance to make Dallas come up here and address the board. Nice to see you, Dallas. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D.
Item D is road construction within a section line right-of-way, CS 1402 for Ton Tropel. Staff is actually requesting a continuation of this item to December 2nd Board of Commission meetings. As a concerned neighbor contacted the office yesterday, and staff believes that a meeting face-to-face this Friday with that neighbor is warranted prior to this construction permit being reviewed.
Do we have a motion of that effect?
Mr. Chair. Is that the only reason that you're asking for a continuance?
Good morning, Brittany Molliter. Yes, that is. I had, and it actually is a landowner that abuts this section line, and he is actually on the township board, so he had some concerns, and I feel like it's warranted to listen to his concerns prior.
Wasn't he notified in time to send his request in before, the day before the meeting?
We don't do notification of the construction within a section line. We don't do-
The sign was up, correct?
They don't have signs or anything.
Did he put a sign up?
No, this type of application doesn't require that. So actually, Jerry had sent him a staff report, and he had contacted the office when he received it. him a staff report, and he had contacted the office when he received it.
And how long ago did they send him the staff report?
Last week.
I'm not sure. I'd have to ask Jerry. I don't know the exact date, to be honest.
And who, did the objecting, did you say?
It's the, one of the neighboring property owners that the section line abuts. So if they do that road construction in that area, it would affect, you know, his property as far as, because he owns per, like three-quarters of the property surrounding this mile of section line.
I'm going to be in favor of postponing this, because I'm not sure that I'm in agreement that the road should be built to township standards as opposed to county standards.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to continue this for two weeks.
December 2nd.
December 2nd.
December 2nd.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item E.
Item E is a Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan update. At the October 29th, 2014 Spring Creek Advisory Group meeting, a recommendation was made by the group to move some funding from one project goal to another in the project plan. The changes were due to just the type of applications that we have received and the type of work in the plan. We had kind of assumed that these would be the type of projects we'd see. We do have some other projects that would fall into these areas, so that's why the advisory group wanted to move them. So the changes that they had recommended was that $24,557 of clean water state revolving funds be moved from Task 1E to Task 1A, which is from a dam and lake improvement project to a riparian stream bank and pro, stream bank project. The reason for that, that dam and lake improvement project, the funding from the Forest Service and the Game, Fish and Parks is no longer there. So really, there's not a reason to have that funding in that task. The second is $35,000 of clean water state revolving funds from Task 1D, which is a forested stormwater project, to Task 1B, which are just regular stormwater or urban stormwater projects. $4,000 of 319 funds from Task 1A, which is a riparian stream bank project, to Task 2, Onsite Wastewater Treatment System Improvement Project. And then there are two recommendations from staff. $1,008 of 319 funds be moved from the riparian stream bank project to manure and grazing projects. That's based upon a current project that was approved by the advisory group. And then $815 of 319 funds from Task 4 to Task 3C Administration to cover expenses incurred by respec outside their scope of work.
Any questions or comments? Anyone have any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to accept staff's recommendation on the movement of funds in the Spring Creek Watershed and Implementation Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I may allow, if I can get 30 more seconds of your time to introduce a new employee in the Planning Department. Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioner, oh, commissioners, it's my pleasure to introduce Thomas John Dorff. He also goes by TJ. So now we've got a TJ and a PJ in the office. It's going to get a little bit more confusing. It already has even. He started on Monday, went through the interview process, and did a very, very good job, as you can see, because he is here. He graduated 1996 from Ball State University with a degree in natural resources and environmental management. He worked for the Interdepartment, InterIndiana Department of Environmental Management, Office of Land Quality. He was an environmental manager there, worked at the Federal Programs Section in conjunction with the EPA. He's also worked as, in the Office of Land Quality for Indiana Department of Environmental Management as a state cleanup section. He's traveled the world working on environmental issues, and he has a very extensive background, and we believe that he's going to be an asset to our department. And that's why we picked you, and that's why he is hired, and we have great expectations, and we anticipate a lot from him in the future. Welcome, South Dakota.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments you wish to make?
I look forward for the opportunity to serve the County of Pennington.
Thank you. Welcome.
Glad you're here. Welcome to Pennington County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the item 17, South Pitch Drive, and Mark is here from the Highway Department. He's the individual that I contacted after being contacted by citizens, and the, Mark can, can kind of describe the situation, but it illustrates the dilemma that we have in plating by the city within the three-mile limit, and whether or not the planted area is annexed or not annexed. So Mark, do you wish to comment some on this?
Okay. Good morning. Mark Chalk with Pennington County Highway. I think we're all familiar with this area. The roads have been talked about in the past. What we have on, I have a, what's the best way to show me where I'm talking about here? Can I do it on here?
There's a red clicker, or a red.
Here you go, just on.
Either, you'd probably do it over here, Mark.
On one of these screens. Okay. You all have this, this printout of the area.
It's the top.
The red one, you said?
Is it not showing?
Not showing on there. No, it shows on the wall, but not on there. On that one.
It's not loaded on that laptop, so.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll just hold it up and, and describe it to you guys. The, the top area that's in the purple is the Rapid City city limits. Those streets are plowed and maintained by the city. Now, the area on the left-hand side in the blue is Big Sky subdivision. It's been in the news and in the, in the works for years on the maintenance of those roads. The, the three-mile, Rapid City, three-mile plating jurisdiction approved those roads and inspected those roads when they were built. And now, the issue we're, we're talking about today is snow removal. That is Big Sky, the blue. Yellow would be the Valley Ridge subdivision. We're in, in the same boat. Now, the checkered yellow part to the, to the far right is the Tinson Road District. They do take care of their roads there on their own. But now, the, the Big Sky subdivision and the Valley Ridge subdivision have no snow removal or road maintenance, per se. We get calls quite often about most snowstorms to, to do something there, to do, remove some snow or ice. It's a, it's a hilly terrain there, coming from the right-hand side, which is the east. It's downhill until you get to about this, the, the border between Valley Ridge and Big Sky. That would be the low area there where county heights drainage comes through. Then it's a large, or fairly steep hill that goes up to the west, about the center of South Pitch Drive, and the rest of those, also Hanson and Avenue A. The ridge runs north and south, going downhill again to Aurora Drive. So it's a very hilly, small stretch of road that does get dangerous there. Now, in the past, or when I went through the files looking for some documentation, when Dell asked where we were at with documentation on any snow removal in that area, I did come across a, a letter that our former Highway Superintendent wrote to the Big Sky Homeowners Association. That, this was in 2007. The Big Sky Homeowners Association was formed in June 11th, 1998, when that subdivision was formed. In 2007, it was still in existence, evidently. Heine wrote a letter to them stating that the county commissioners directed Pennington County Highway Department to plow snow on a portion of Avenue A from Reservoir Road West to Dejees Drive, even though it is not on the county highway system. Now, that would be, Avenue A is the farthest south street in the colored sections in these subdivisions. And the reason that was done, I believe it was agreed on by the commission at the time to, that we would, would clean that road was, I wish my pointer worked. The, the roads on your, on your diagram, the red roads on the bottom, which are maintained by the county highway department, go up and meet Avenue A. The one being Dejees from the south to, north to Avenue A on your left-hand side. Aurora comes up on, to meet Avenue A, and also, which one is that? That, Pennington Street comes from the south and meets Avenue A. Our trucks go up there, turn around, plowing snow. There's nowhere to deposit the snow that's in their, in their, loaded in their plow without leaving a mess. So it was agreed upon, or I think it was a verbal agreement with the commission at the time, that the county would clear Avenue A and use it as a route to get to their next streets as we, as we clear our, our streets that are on the county highway system. Now, the next letter I did find was from our former Highway Superintendent to Robert Ellis, Public Works Director of Rapid City, that stated, he informed Mr. Ellis that the only service Pennington County provides is snow removal after a major storm event. Now, over the years, we have been in there after these blizzards. These people don't, do not get plowed out by this county, by the city. Their homeowners association in the Big Sky was dissolved. There was never one formed a road district or a, a road homeowners association in the Valley Ridge subdivision. So nobody plows snow in those areas, and I guess we were verbally directed by the commission to go in there after the Pennington County roads were cleared and open those up for emergency purposes, fire, medical, whatever the case may be. So we have been doing that under what it looks like a verbal agreement or a verbal direction from the commission for safety purposes. I think what we were looking for, Mr. Peterson may be looking for, is some better documentation or some guidance from the, the whole commission, I think, because, and us at the whole, at the Highway Department would like that, too. Right now, we're just on a, on a verbal, to remove that snow after a major storm event. So it doesn't say whose discretion that is. And then also, there has been a couple of times we were in there, since the hilly terrain in that area, when it's not treated, becomes very icy and very dangerous at times. We've been asked to go in and sand, sand the road then, also. We just want to make sure we're, we're doing that in, in the right direction, under the right direction, and, and have something to, to tell the residents, because every, every snow event we get, or not every snow event, but quite often we get requests from the residents, and we explain to them we cannot go out there. They're not on the county highway system, and, but they're not on the city. A lot of times, I'll send them, direct them to the city to get some, some, some assistance there. As we all know, this, this area has been tied up in legal situations with the developer and the city of Rapid City. I guess, if you have any other questions, I have a little bit of documentation here, and I'll try to answer them.
You've done an excellent job of summarizing this, Mark, and I guess I would encourage commissioners to make comments on where we should go with this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Didn't, wasn't there something in the news here just recently that the city was going to annex that Big Sky area?
As I understood it, the city made an offer to the people to, if they would agree to be annexed, the city had something like $800,000 to commit to road maintenance and whatnot. No, I'm not sure about the figure, but fixing some of the problems that are there now and so on. But I have no knowledge of whether the people responded in any fashion or not. Do you, Mark?
I do not. Earlier, I believe it was earlier this year, my understanding is it went to the Supreme Court, the, the litigation between the city and the developer. And then that responsibility for repairs of the streets, I don't know about maintenance, was going to be on the developer. But then, since then, you're right, Mr. Holloway, I, I did see in the paper that the, the city was talking about annexation if they had 100% participation, voluntary participation from the, the landowners. And I have not heard anything since that point.
The second comment I guess I would have is, is, you know, it's been informally talked about that the city, if they're going to plat land outside of the city limits, part of that plating agreement should be the annexation. It, that would be, that would be something that the city could implement if they wanted to. Is that, is that correct?
I'm not sure. Commissioner Busker, do you have any opinions, whether, whether the county could go, enter into a memorandum of understanding or something with the city that?
Yeah, I think that we probably could, but they would still have to go through their annexation procedures of getting, and I, I don't remember what all that is. A certain percent of the people have to agree to it, or, or an election or something, but.
But this plat, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but the plating usually takes place, some developer comes in and says, I want to buy this land up out here. Now, you only got one landowner, and I want to make, subdivide it, and I want to put all these houses in there. Could they not annex at that juncture?
They could.
And they got one guy.
See, I, I think maybe what needs to be done is, is that statute that provides that they, they annex, they have control of the plating within a certain area. And that's fine. You want to plat it, city? You're going to annex it at the same time. That's kind of what you were talking about, isn't it?
But you could, we, we could. I mean, in lieu of trying to convince the legislators to do this, we could meet with the city and say.
True. I think again.
This is what we'd like you to do, is you got one guy, one landowner, at the time you're plating this, annex it at that time.
Mm-hmm. As part of the, the agreement to.
Plating it.
Plat it. It's, you're going to be annexed.
Yeah. Because had they done that up in there, oh, the developer would have agreed to it to get it all platted.
True. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is, is this piece of this area that we're talking about, is it adjoining the city, city limits?
Yeah.
And what piece, what piece of that? I think it's, I think I heard you say the piece at the top?
Okay, the, the purple on the top is the city limit.
Okay, so that's right up against it.
Yes.
Right.
They, they, they've annexed around Dejees, I think because of, well, the shape it's in, you know? Their lines are quite imaginary, or not imaginary, but they do quite a good job of annexation in, in the parts of the valley that, on the roads that they want and the roads that they don't want.
I think your first comment was correct. Imaginary is probably.
The city's very good at annexing land and leaving the roads for the county to take care of, or, or annexing down the center of the road, and then. or, or annexing down the center of the road and then that leaves it in no man's land.
We see a lot of that.
But as I remember in the conversation that went, and you said that this lawsuit that between the city and the developer had gone to the Supreme Court. And I think that it was our former highway superintendent's position that the county was not going to get involved in this until such time that that was over. And then we may have to sue the developer ourselves to get that taken care of. And I think that's what he was waiting to see, what the Supreme Court would say about the position on this. But I do remember something about the, the deal of cleaning up that road. And I wouldn't have any problem continuing that. My only situation would be that if I was going to vote on this, I would want a, before I'd vote yes, I'd want a motion that would say that the city, upon annexation, would immediately take over the roads and Pennington County would pull them out, pull out of any maintenance or snow, snow plowing on this stretched roads. So that's where I'd be.
If, if we agreed to plow all the snow out there, the people will never agree to be annexed.
Right.
That's the only, that's the only club you got hanging over their head to get them into the city is your roads. If we say, oh, we'll fix it.
But we do.
What's their point, never agreeing to annexation?
We do have part of that already in a motion that was made back then by the commissioners, that we would do this on, on major storm events after everything else was taken care of, if I remember right.
That was a, a verbal understanding that's, that is stated in these letters. I wasn't personally involved with those decisions or where, I don't know where it came from for sure. But I do know, remember Heine commenting that the, the commission said, did say we could go in there after major storm events. So after our roads were cleared. And I guess that's what we have been doing. But we get, we do get a lot more requests than major storm events and, and I guess it does not say who, who's going to determine a major storm event or like the emergency situation of sheer ice, you know, a snow packed that is turning into clear ice, you know, it, it becomes a very dangerous situation there for the traveling public. And I'm not here to, to sway anyone's opinion, I just, you know, stating some facts. And from what I'm hearing from some of the residents, the, the school is in real close proximity, just to the north of, of South Pitch there, probably two blocks, two, three city blocks probably. So there, there's a, there's a lot of traffic in this area. I, I do understand their requests, you know, and I do understand the emergency situations. And I guess if the commission were going to okay the county to go clear these roads under major events, maybe clarify who, who makes that decision? Is it the commission or is it the, the highway superintendent or?
I remember the discussion that it was the highway superintendent that made the determination.
Okay, and I, I don't have documentation to that.
Sure, that's what I meant. And did we ever look for a motion that was made at that time? I think it's in there.
Okay, I didn't see any motion in our files at the Highway Department. I didn't have a lot of time to research this. We, we have been busy with this, the, the winter weather.
Haven't seen any snow or wind or anything out there, I mean.
Well, just this last week or so, you know, when, when this came up, of course, you know, we've been pretty fortunate actually.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The, the roads to the west or to the east of Reservoir Road, the inning and those in that development area, does the county take care of those roads?
The east of Reservoir Road, yes.
They're on the county system?
County highway system. They were not part of, of the subdivision with the Valley Ridge or the, the Big Sky subdivision. I think these just, they fell out of the loop with the subdivision, with the, the three mile plating. And.
I, I'd like to, I mean, I think we need to address this in some way, but I'd like to put it off for two weeks and so that we could check with the city and see where they're at with the annexation of this thing. Because Commissioner Buschroot is right. If we go in there and start taking care of those roads, keeping them plowed all the time and, and and they're never going to agree to annex. And they really, they really ought to be annexed, it ought to be annexed into the city.
The opinion as to what's a major storm event, if you asked everybody in this room, it would be different, you know. I, I agree with Commissioner Holloway and with the agreement of the rest of the commission. I would, I would suggest Tom and, and Mark come back in two weeks with perhaps a suggested wording of a motion that would give you the kind of authority that you're comfortable with in, in reaching decisions. And also, I do think we need to generate some, some formal conversation with the city about this whole thing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I know you, the, the chair and vice chair have meetings on a monthly basis or at least on a regular basis with city and other governmental agencies. Are you going to have one of those meetings before our next commission meeting?
No.
Oh. Because that might be a place to at least start and see if you could get any interest on their part.
Those are called the big four. School of Mines, School District, City, County. And they're just more information sharing.
I see.
Sorts of things.
We did reach out to the city when we got this complaint last week. So we will touch base with Terry, I can't pronounce his last name, with the city, the Public Works Director, and see if we can get that conversation for our next commission meeting.
That'd be good.
Maybe we could invite the mayor to our next commission meeting to discuss this item and see if, because they could voluntarily agree. We could go to the legislature and change the law, but the city Rapid City could say, as a policy, if we're going to plat a piece of ground, we're only going to agree to plow it for our developer if he agrees to be annexed. And it'd be a simple, I would think it'd be a simple process. But, so maybe we ought to invite the mayor to come to our next meeting to discuss this. And he can bring whatever amount of staff he wants to bring to have a discussion.
Actually, I, I agree and in the process of something like that, I think a comprehensive review of the transportation system take place between the city and the county before any agreement is reached. When, when, when this is done, everybody knows who's responsible for what.
Yes, I agree. Until then, if there is a major storm event, we're, we're still on a verbal to open that area after county roads are taken care of and cleared.
That's what you've been doing in the past, we haven't changed anything, all right?
The only, I'd like to see you look for a motion on that because I'm pretty sure there is one. That's been quite some time ago, but I, I'm sure the conversation was that.
Okay. We'll make a better motion.
Who will?
Next, next meeting.
Okay. But I still, it still wouldn't hurt to look and see if it's there, just to see what was said about it.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's good. And Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So are, are we agreeing that Holly would reach out to the mayor and say, we'd like to have a discussion about this and see if he'll come?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you want a motion to that effect?
I don't know, do we need a motion? Okay.
Okay. Next item is committee reports.
I, last week attended the South Dakota, a committee for the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, which has our liability insurance and they're making some changes there where they're taking over more of the administration of it. And from a, a group in Sioux Falls that had it before. They think it'll save me $880,000, of which we will get a fair share because it'll reduce our fees that. Anyway, I, I got a whole bunch of paperwork from them on what, what's being changed and what they're doing and who's all a part of the, the process. And I have, Holly's going to put copies of all that in all of your boxes. So it's kind of, it, it's just informative information, but it's pretty good stuff. And, and they're making some pretty good progress. And that's a good, it was a good move by them to do it.
Mr. Holloway?
I don't have anything, thanks.
I don't have any committee reports either. And next item is items from the public. Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
In favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Post, motion carried.